Okay, we're gonna call our meeting to order. This meeting is held in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. It was properly noticed and has been posted and certified by the clerk. The fire exits are not this door, it is this door to my right and the door behind you. Roll call.
Mr. Hofficamp.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Roberts.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mayor Palat.
Here.
You can stand for the giant salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We don't have our committees yet, so we don't have any committee reports, administrative reports?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We'll start with some public works activity in the, in January. Obviously, we all know now that we've had two plowable snow events. First being the weekend of January sixth and then January seventh. And just this past Tuesday. And it looks like the weather forecast is forecasting a repeat of Tuesday this Friday. So our DPW is doing a great job thus far and is moving along. As I reported to the governing body last year, the Morris Council Six that represented our white power and blue collar unions had notified PRC that they were no longer going to represent our units. So there was a representation change. For the blue collar union, it will be the IFPTE Local 196. And for the white power, it will be IFPTE Union Council Eight. And then on the annual report for the administrator, I will be putting this in writing, but I just wanted to give you some highlights. On DPW, on the paving project, one, ten thousand one hundred and eighteen point eighty-seven tons of blacktop were installed. Six thousand five hundred and three tons were from borough funds with three thousand six hundred and fifteen tons from New Jersey DOT grant funding. This allowed us to pave twenty-nine roads, which came out to over four miles of roads that were completely resurfaced. Our patch crew, which concludes repair, curving and potholes, installed seven hundred and forty, almost seven hundred and forty-four tons of blacktop. There were seventy-five basin repairs using block, brick and bags of cement. On the water and sewer utilities, the main issue there has been RP FOS. As has been reported last year, we have four out of the seven wells that are online and the last, and the last three are in production on the, on the GAC units. And as noted, that the RP FOS detection at the four wells that have the units installed are at zero detection. On the recycling center, DPW was able to find a company in Andover that is actually paying us to bring our cardboard. The mar, the market dictates the amount of revenue, but since May to date, we have received a little over a thousand dollars. Eleven, one thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars in revenue for the cardboard. In tax collection, the year-end report has shown that the collector has collected fifty, fifty million, four hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars, twenty-four cents in total revenue. That obviously includes the school revenue as well, or the school tax revenue. From the tax assessor, there was an increase of four million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred dollars of value added in 2023, which equates out to an additional one hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars in total tax revenue for 2023. In the zoning department, there were one thousand five hundred and eighty zoning questions answered. Zoning permits, there were one hundred and forty-seven approved, fifty-seven denied. Little complaints, property maintenance issues, warning, there were seventy-one warnings sent regarding property maintenance. Zoning complaints resulted in seventy-six warnings sent. Sixty-eight fence permits, fence permits were approved and two were denied. In our construction department, new permits issued were one thousand forty. There were seventeen new residential buildings, twenty-nine alterations. And there were, I'm sorry, alterations were one thousand ninety-one, additions were twenty-nine. And an update on our revaluation process. I handed out earlier and for the public, there are some available up below the dais here. ASI, which is the corporation that was contracted to do our revaluation, has provided an update. They are at step seven for, excuse me, step four through step seven on the revaluation process, which began with inspections that commenced last March. Then they analyzed their inspections and reviewed that analysis. So where they are now, and letters will be going out this week, that will provide the property owners with their proposed assessment. And the chart will give you sort of a breakdown of where we are with total value. So the, the value in 2023, prior to the revaluation, was one billion, four hundred and twenty-seven million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred. And the total assessed value for 2024 would be two billion, five hundred and eight million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred. They project that, that, that new value revised, revised tax rate. The current tax rate is three dollars, three point four nine nine per a hundred dollars of assessed value. That is total tax, including our county school and local. And with the adjustment, if the budget were to be exactly the same, the rate would likely be one dollar, one point nine eight seven per, per a hundred hours of evaluation. This will be posted on our website. On our website, with this will be a link to ASI. There will be appointments available. You can schedule the appointment online or call them. They will offer virtual appointments and they will also offer in-person appointments here at the municipal building with them during the weekday, but they will also be making evening and weekend appointments available. Basically, they're looking to have whatever meetings the property owners request being conducted and completed by about February fifteenth is when they would go then to step six, which is submitting your book to the County Board of Taxation. And then step seven would be ASI defending, I guess, their assessment or proposed assessment for any tax appeals that would be filed. The important thing here, and I could ask Mr. Urson to give some more detail, but the, the governing body's participation in this is simply hiring ASI, as we were required to by the County Board of Taxation. The proposed assessments is their work product and we should direct any property owner with questions to ASI. And Mr. Urson, I don't know if you wanted to add something?
Yeah, no, the, the process is very specifically set up so that politics doesn't play a role in tax assessments, so that elected officials don't have a direct role. The tax assessor has a good degree of independence. The tax assessor is responsible for the assessments and they use ASI as the consultant for this mass appraisal for her to update all of her assessments. So the, you know, the council, whenever there's a revaluation, the council certainly hears about the revaluation and, you know, can have concerns about how smoothly it's going and the, the level of communication and so forth. But the council has no role with respect to the actual assessments themselves or the, the cases that will, you know, eventually proceed before the, the county tax board.
Okay, Mayor, I have one final item. This will be in addition to the bill list when we get to that. And it's reflective of a refund for application fees to the Hopaccon Hills and Land and Homeowners Association for two-hundred-and-fifty hours. This was approved by resolution in December. Thank you.
We are open for public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for you to speak to the governing body. You have five minutes to talk about anything and any, anything and everything that is on the agenda. Can I have a motion to open for public?
A motion.
Second. Public? You can just, sorry.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Adams. I'm here to address the municipal lawyer issue. The current town lawyer has a personal relationship with the past mayor, as well as with previous town council. He should not be re-nominated under this new administration. We need a lawyer who is not biased and will take the issues in this town seriously and for the good of the community as a whole, not for a select few. Thank you.
You can move on.
Good evening, my name is Bob Duncan. My comments tonight are about the land use board appointments. Since 2008, I was appointed a, a zoning board member with the intent by Sylvia Patillo for me to use my knowledge, my professional skills, to try to help develop this town into a more profitable commercial business. It's a hard town because it's a cul-de-sac town. It's very hard to get anybody to come into this town because you don't have a major highway going through it. That was Sylvia's intent back in 2008. I've been on that board up until now as a land use member and I've served the board with as much time as I could possibly put in with the intent of the three things you're supposed to do when you're on a board. One, protect our town. Two, protect your neighborhood in which applicants are trying to get things developed in it. And three, hear the applicant's reasonings for what he wants, the extent of what he wants and how he wants to do it. So it's always been try to do the three things, try to do it fair and make sure you're giving the town the right build as you go forward. In recent times, it's been, the last two years, everybody that's on the lakefront has just thought that they could build as far out into the lake as possible. We all cherish the lakes, the lake is part of our community and a very important part. But it seems like everybody in this town that has money wants to build further and further out. They want the two-story boat house, they want the dock to be sixty feet longer, they want to have as big a boat as they can possibly have. That's always been my position, that you have to challenge it, you have to challenge the architects. I asked Bill Hagerty what the, what the penalty was for perjury, because if you look at these drawings and what's being said, most of the people in the, coming to the board are lying right to our faces. There's no penalty for it. Why we, why we make them give an oath, that's a different story. But I'm here tonight because I found out that I was not reappointed to the board after fifteen years. I called Mayor-elect Palatay and asked her and told her I wanted to still be on the board. She didn't answer me, she said, "I'll get back to you, I'll give you a call," no call. I called her again after she was mayor. Again, no call back, nothing. But you know, here's the funny part. I heard that you had to give your, your resume. I didn't even know I had to give a resume, I didn't know how I had to ask nothing. I wasn't given one bit of respect for my fifteen years of service in this town. And my service goes in many different directions in this town, alright? First of all, I've been a Boy Scout leader for twenty-two years. I got sixty-five boys in our town, Stanhope and surrounding towns to rank up Eagle Scout. PAC eighty-eight, I was this cub master for five years and I got, we have a couple of boys that have become police officers in the town. And the whole thing was develop young men to become better community members, to treat people with respect, to follow the scout law, to follow all that. Twenty-two years of doing that. We did every parade, we did every cleanup, we did cleanups on our own, teaching boys how to be men in this town, so they'd stay in the town and help develop it. I used to tell them I was on the board, trying to make the town better, trying to give development that would make it essential that they could stay in this town. Alright, so you do this for all these years, that's wonderful. But I wasn't asked my credentials, so I'm gonna give you my credentials tonight. I have a master's degree in civil engineering and a bachelor's degree in architecture. I've worked on the MetLife Stadium, which we built, I worked on the UN. I just built four roller coasters and I've done a host of other pharmaceutical jobs. I'm now working on Monahan Train Hall, which we just opened and we're digging the tunnels between New York and New Jersey. Forty-two years of heavy construction experience means when people come to the board, they can't bullshit me. They know that I know what's on the drawings. When I, when Ryan joined the board, I was happy because Batman knows his business, he's a professional engineer and between both of us, I think we really set some gold, good goals together. Because we certainly made a difference on that board because they couldn't finagle us. They, they could get me alone, but they couldn't get both of us at the same time. So I was happy to hear that Ryan was gonna be on the board because it said, gee, I want to be on the board four more years before I retire and I move down, out of the town or something. I put a lot of time into this town. I was a track coach for ten years. You, you put your heart and soul in this, I raised two children in this town. Just so you know, the chairs you were sitting in were donated by my company to this, to this Borough Hall. Those very chairs. The two tables you walk by when you come out here, donated. Three box trucks were donated to this town that I purposely got here. I dedicated my heart and soul into this town and what do I get? Not so much as a call. I don't care that we're changing political parties, that we got different people in the village. It's not fair to be treated like that, ever. I didn't teach my kids to do that and I find it insulting to be treated like that. How dare you, it's not fair. Fifteen years and not so much as a call. If you have a different agenda, fine, deal with it. Man up and tell me to my face you're not welcome anymore, Bob. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. I will respond to that. As you know, I've been here for, what are we on, seventeen days? There was no advertisement for resumes. We were actually out and about, having people that wanted to join groups, committees, boards, commissions and everything. If they were interested, they were sending their information in. There is a change in some of the boards. We are going to a different direction with different people that are on the boards. Of course, your fifteen years of service is absolutely fabulous. I did speak to you yesterday and I did tell you that as soon as we had, had memorialized everything, I would give you a phone call. And that's exactly what I planned on doing, but that hasn't happened yet.
But did, but did you say to me you want to hear my resume? You wanted to ask me any questions? Did you have any inkling that you wanted to know anything about me other than you weren't putting me on? If you weren't putting me on, I was already a member fifteen years, where's the debate?
Mr. Duncan, there, there was no debate. I did speak to you when I was mayor-elect and you did give me your resume when I spoke to you because I wrote it down.
Okay.
So I was aware of that and I do appreciate it and I appreciate all of the time that you have given to the town and all the time that you've given to the children of this town. And that's a very important thing that's here. And of course, everybody's appreciative of everything that you have donated here. And again, just because this year there happens to be different people on the board does not mean that you cannot come next year and be part of the board next year. Because there's more people that are up next year.
Do we have vacancies on the board?
Yes. Well, we have vacancies, but we will fill them tonight.
There's two vacancies. Ellen Gilbert resigned, I didn't. We were the two that came onto the board at the same exact time. I chose to stay to want to be on another four years. Ellen chose not to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, public?
I didn't plan on saying anything, but I would have to agree with Mr. Duncan. It took me three years of entering the land use board to get him to put an environmental member on the land use board and on environmental. We had a lawyer who sat there and said he hadn't looked it up yet. Mayor Francis told him it was fine to put an alternate on there. It's not fine to put an alternate on, these are basic things that should be done. Things should not be memorialized, which Mr. Duncan was the only other one that I remember fighting, that they shouldn't memorialize things at the same meeting. Because nobody checks up to see if the stuff was done contingent upon. And then they come back and then it was, well, the other one was supposed to do it, but they sold the property and now it's your problem. And the guy already has somebody moving into the building and now he's stuck because the road isn't here and it wasn't there and we don't remember anything about the parking spaces and all of a sudden, everybody doesn't have a memory either. They don't remember Hudson Mar, Hudson and Maxim parking lot? I remember Hudson Maxim parking lot. I remember the lease agreement. But all of a sudden, nobody remembered anything Tuesday. And I'm not telling you that, Mr. Smith. Okay, you get, you got nothing to do with that. I'm just, I'm just saying, you were there Tuesday night, but you really were not part of my complaint right now. So yeah, there, there is a problem and I'm sorry to see Mr. Duncan go.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to bring it back?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Next on the agenda, approval of minutes for December twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
Yes, make it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of one, three?
You gotta do what?
Oh, because Rachel, okay. Roll call?
Mr. Hofficamp.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Epstein.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Epstein.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Approval of the January third, twenty twenty-four minutes. Everyone's eligible for that.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any correspondence that we have?
No.
You don't want to talk about this letter? That we got from?
You can bring it up if you want to, sure.
The Associate, the Bernard, the Bernard Association, we all got letters in our mail.
I did get that one. If, if I may make a suggestion, we should probably respond to that letter and have him talk to John Rushkey and the DPW about tying into the, the water system. But that's, that's a private matter, that's not a public matter. Even if you had, if you had two, two houses that wanted to hook in or one house that hooked in, seven houses can hook in. But that's something that the, the engineer really needs to handle.
Oh, I understand.
That's not us.
I understand what you're saying and it's, it's like a, it's a private homeowner situation.
It's a private homeowner situation. We can't really come in and say, oh yeah, you guys got to get rid of your wells and you've got to take town water. We're not really at liberty to do that. They need to bring that to John Rushkey.
I can tell you that John Rushkey has already responded to the homeowner.
Oh, okay, great.
Then that's handled.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty twenty-four, twenty-six, the bill list. Someone like to move that?
Mayor, if I may ask anyone here if they have anything that they don't want on the bill list or want abstaining from? Mayor Seem?
And we need to, we need to add this and it's the requisition number is R four dash zero two three one one.
Give me any of the?
Yeah, R four dash zero two three one one. Steve of Hopaccon Hills, Land and Homeowners Association, two hundred and fifty dollars for an application refund.
Mayor, I make the motion to move the bill list in its entirety and including R four dash zero two three one one.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Hofficamp.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Epstein.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Epstein.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Okay. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve, the cash management plan?
There was no consent.
There was no consent.
I'll make a motion to move the cash management plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we just, I think this was on our first meeting, correct? Correct. Can we just explain to the public what's changed so they're aware of the modifications? So what's changed on the cash management plan is, first off, we removed some verbiage that was originally on it because it's repetitive in our ordinance. It's already repeated in, I believe it's thirty-three, thirty-three one, thirty-three five.
Yeah, it's checked with thirty-three, I think, twenty-seven through thirty-two.
Yeah. So it was repetitive, so we just moved that, so the protection is still there for the employees. And the only other thing that we added was we have the Recreation Trust is being made official for checks where the mayor and the recreation coordinator will sign those. And again, that was just under our advisement. All in favor?
I'm done.
Aye.
Your, your resolution, it's a resolution, you should have the rule.
It's on sale, it's on.
We'll call a roll.
Mr. Hofficamp.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Next on our agenda is the twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, Award of a Professional Service Agreement for Municipal Attorney. So moving along on that. I am going to make a nomination so that we can open this up for discussion. I want to discuss this openly because this is actually where it should be. The Office of Municipal Attorney in the Borough Form of Government is an important role. The mayor and the municipal attorney work together in daily matters pertaining to the borough business, which could be personnel, ordinances, boards, committees, commissions, administrative code, contracts, et cetera. I was elected to be mayor of Hopaccon by a significant percentage of voters. The mayor's position is defined by being the head of the government. The mayor sees to it that laws of the state and the ordinance of the borough are faithfully executed. The responsibility bestowed upon me to be the mayor of Hopaccon is one I do not take lightly. With that in mind, I believe I am therefore authorized by the people of Hopaccon to have the professionals and staff who can help me achieve the people's goals to which they have elected me to. And by not choosing my nomination for municipal attorney and labor attorney, this would not allow me to proceed in the direction the voters want the governing body to go. I want to do what the people of Hopaccon voted me into the mayor's office to do. Everyone on this board has run for office and there are some board members who want to run for other offices. In the realm of public opinion, this will not look good. I'm not asking for anything other than previous incoming mayors asked for and had the privilege of having, which is their nomination for municipal attorney granted. I am nominating this evening, evening Kevin Kelly from Kelly and Ward. Kevin Kelly, in his RFP, has offered to be hired at the same rate as our attorney from twenty twenty-three, Shank Price, Smith and King. Kevin Kelly has offered to be present in the municipal building one day a week for our professionals, administrator, municipal clerk, CFO, building inspector, council members and the mayor. That is forty-eight extra days of legal representation with our municipal attorney that the borough will not have to pay for. So starting off twenty twenty-four, Kelly and Ward will already have saved the borough taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars with those forty-eight extra days of legal representation. As an incoming mayor with only seventeen days of transition under my belt, there are several professionals and department heads that I have been relying on. This is not an excuse, but it's an honest fact. Which is why I need to rely on a municipal attorney more than the previous mayors of Hopaccon since they did not have the luxury of transitioning into the position of mayor. Having a municipal attorney who would be available to me for an entire day would be absolutely priceless and technically, it would be priceless since Kelly and Ward would not be charging the borough. Kelly and Ward most recently are former councils for Sussex County Municipal Attorney, special counsel also. They have worked for Byram Township, Frankfurt Township, Frieden Township, Ring Township, Hamburg, Hardeston, Hopaccon, Newton, Sussex, Vernon, Mount Arlington and West Milford. Kelly and Ward references consist of two mayors and two Sussex County Commissioners and a former Sussex County Freeholder who was a mayor and a councilman also. Kelly and Ward obviously come highly recommended. Kelly and Ward are experienced in municipal council, renewable energy, redevelopment, public utilities, planned development, recreational facilities, infrastructure, town centers and industrial. Kelly and Ward would always represent the borough with a named partner, never an associate. Kelly and Ward would always represent the borough with a named partner, never an associate. I would like to ask the council one last time for the approval of Kelly and Ward. I would like the ability to do what the public has elected me to do for the borough of Hopaccon. I feel I can make that come to fruition with Kevin Kelly. I would like to again nominate Kevin Kelly from Kelly and Ward. I will also be nominating John Urson for labor attorney for ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seventeen A. Kevin Kelly and John Urson have worked cohesively in the past on several legal matters, including most recently Kevin Kelly as county counsel and John Urson as the counsel for Sussex County Sheriff's Office. So, there is already professional continuity between the two parties. I ask for your vote for Kevin Kelly as municipal attorney.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mayor, if I may make this suggestion that, uh, I don't know if Ryan, Chris or, or Dawn or I know Kevin Kelly. I've done a little bit of research based on our conversation, if we could have the opportunity to interview.
Absolutely.
That's what we'd like to do and just, and, uh, and, uh, I have some questions and I'm sure that everybody else would have questions in front of the council.
I would appreciate that.
Before we move on, then we can, we can come to an educated decision on that. I don't know him personally, I don't know who he is.
Would you, what, would you like him to come to the next meeting?
That'd be, I normally, that's fine. We do an interview.
In exact session, right?
Exact session, I think. John, if you could tie us on that?
Yeah, you would, you would normally do interviews not in public, you would do interviews in a closed session. You could schedule a closed session before a council meeting or something like that.
Okay. So, I'd make a motion to table this until we.
Second.
Would you like that for the February seventh meeting, the executive session for February seventh?
Yes, yes, that'd be perfect, John.
Thank you. Is that tabling seventeen and seventeen A?
No, I, I'm. Oh, sorry, I'm just. Seventeen A, you're talking about, correct, not seventeen A? Seventeen by itself, seventeen A.
So, seventeen was tabled and seventeen A we're still moving on?
Right, except to.
Just my clarification before we.
I think we table both as well. I would, I would make motion to table both as well.
We already have a motion and second, we have to, we have to vote on that first. And that's the table seventeen.
Voting in seventeen, tabling seventeen.
Yeah, we have to vote on that first.
Okay, roll call?
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
This is to table it?
This is to table just seventeen.
You got it, yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And we have twenty twenty-four dash seventeen A, would you like to table that also or would you like to?
I would like to make the motion to table that.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Uh, twenty twenty-four dash twenty, award of professional services agreement for municipal engineer, I would like to nominate John Rushkey from McDonald.
So, move.
Yeah.
Second.
A roll call?
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Nope.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, twenty twenty-four dash twenty A, award of a professional service agreement for a water slash sewer engineer, I would like to nominate, uh, John Rushkey from McDonald.
So moved, second.
Roll call?
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Nope.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, award of a shared service agreement with the, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-four dash twenty.
D.
D. Award of a professional service agreement for municipal planner. I can say that last night at the land use board, the land use board, uh, recommended, uh, Van Cleef as an engineer. Um, in speaking with the administrator today, we thought that it was cohesive to go in line with the same, um, planner. So, my recommendation, my nomination for municipal planner would be Van Cleef.
So moved, second.
Roll call?
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
G, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, award of a shared service agreement with the county of Sussex for the congregant nutrition program. This is for the, uh, lunch program that is, uh, at the senior center from nine to one every day.
So moved, second.
A roll call?
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, uh, next we have the, um, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight, authorization to use the Borough Hall as a satellite office for honorable Congressman, uh, Thomas Keen.
I'll move it.
Second.
Discussion.
We have a discussion, yeah.
Just to clarify for the public, of all the municipally owned buildings, he requested for applause, correct, which is why it is listed here on the resolution?
Yes, um, in the letter from, uh, Congressman Keen's office, they requested to use the chambers here, uh, for exactly what the resolution says, uh, with the, um, satellite office being, I believe it's the third. First and third, um, Mondays for, uh, for this building, that's why they chose this. We did, we did the resolution based on what they were asking for. Are there cameras in here?
Yes.
Yes.
They wouldn't consider a more confidential area than a videotaped room?
The, the cameras that are currently in here do not pick up voice, they're just viewed and they're viewed at dispatch.
I can ask the question, but I'm sure that wherever, um, Congressman Keen is and his staff, I'm sure that they have cameras, but I will double check if that's an issue or not.
Thanks.
Uh, roll call?
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Uh, yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
No.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, uh, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine, authorization for hiring of a licensed water operator through the competitive contract process.
Um, I have a question before, um, it says, uh, Mercer County.
Which you said it, okay. Mayor.
Yeah, okay.
You have a motion and second?
No, we don't.
A motion?
We're sending this out to bid.
What is this?
Yes, competitive contract.
Competitive contract.
Publicly.
Second. Roll call?
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinances, we have done. Oh, business, oh, business is, um, the appointments to the land use board for, um, class four member with a term running through twelve, thirty-one, twenty-seven. We have, um, um, uh, Steve Pusivik.
Where is he?
Uh, second class four member with a term running through twelve, thirty-one, twenty-seven is Richard Shirella. Alternate number two with a term running through twelve, thirty-one, twenty-five is Don Rodriguez. Alternate number four with a term running through twelve, thirty-one, twenty-five is Rick Gaethan. C, appointments to the recreation commission.
Do you wanna pause and vote on those, Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, and, and just, just so the council's clear, the class four members are appointed by the mayor, so the council is free to vote to, uh, indicate its, um, support of that, uh, appointment, but once the mayor makes the class four appointment, the appointment's made. Um, but the, the council should vote on the alternates. So, you can vote on all four, if that was the council's, uh, if that's the way the council wants to handle it. Or you could just accept the fact that the mayor has put the class four nominations on the record tonight and, but the council should vote on the alternates.
Mayor, can you, uh, give me the alternates again?
The alternate was, uh, Rick Gaethan and Don Rodriguez.
Are we doing one of those here?
Uh, Don Rodriguez is, I believe.
So, this would, uh, not allow Bob Duncan to be continued as a member?
I would be more than happy to, I would be more than happy to, um, entertain the possibility of, uh, keeping Bob as an alternate. However, we, uh, in the discussions with most of the current members that are there, uh, we were talking about just having some newer people that are on there, just the, the land use board. There have been people that have been there for quite some time, just like Alan, and the thought process was having some, some newer people there might actually help the board in the direction that they're going into. So, I had talked to other board members.
Right. I'll just give by, I mean, by.
But not me.
What's that?
We talked to everybody but not me. Fair. Fair and balanced.
It does sound fair.
That's not fair and balanced. I talked to members, but not you.
We don't vote on the class four members, but we do vote on the alternates.
Correct.
Can I move to table the alternates until we have a chance to maybe have a conversation with anybody who wants the job? Um, I, I would love to talk to Dan and I would love to talk to Rick, to know their background.
Don.
It, Don.
Dan Felsen.
I'm sorry. Did I say Dan?
You said Dan.
I say Dan.
Don, Don.
I apologize, I'm sorry. Don, I, I'd like to have chat, uh, so.
No, we don't.
Okay, so, so. Move to table the alternates. Yeah, so just, just to be clear, unless the council takes any action, the class four appointments are made, that's the mayor's power, they're, she's read them into the record, they're made. We, yeah, we don't get to change that. Correct, so if you, with the alternates, you could vote to, uh, approve the nominations, um, not approve it or table it. I'm gonna move to table the, uh, nominations for alternates, just so you can, uh, talk to them and, you know, give other people an opportunity to maybe stick their head in.
I'm ensuring. That's what's second, to table the alternates.
Move to table the alternates. And, and just for calendar control, the, the motion is to table it to the next meeting, so, so the clerk can keep track. That's a roll call then.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
No.
I was making the suggestion to you.
That's second. Ms. Roberts.
To table?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Yes.
Okay, moving on to appointments to the recreation commission, full member with a term running through twelve, thirty-one, twenty-four, Kathy Evans. Full member with a term running through twelve, thirty-one, twenty-eight, Ola Venkman.
So, um, again, I think just for the clarity of the record, um, under five dash two, those are mayor appointments, so the mayor's read them into the record, the appointments are made, period.
Okay, moving on to environmental commission, uh, we only have, um, uh, two people which would not be a quorum, so I can just move those into the February seventh. Hopefully, we have people for that, uh, committee by then, um.
You're in motion to table it?
So, we can have it, yeah, so if we can have a motion to table.
Motion to table.
Second.
Until two seven.
Until two seven.
Next we have the appointments to the open space. I'm sorry. Roll call?
Can I ask a quick question on that? Okay, we're tabling this.
Environmental commission?
Right. You're tabling it just as an agenda item, these are mayor appointments, but. As an agenda item because we don't have a lot of names.
Well, we, we, we do have, we do have, um, again, people who are, uh, asking to, to be on the board, I just haven't had the ability to go through everybody and I was just waiting for, um, the ability to do that.
Understood, got you, thank you.
So, we made a motion to table.
I have a motion and second.
Roll call?
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, appointments to the open space committee, I do not have the members for open space, but the, uh, council rep, um, uh, is, I put on Christine Smith. And the land use rep number two with a term running through twelve, thirty-one, twenty-four, that, um, we need two land use people actually in open space, we already have Jonathan Taylor, the second one is Judy Cropp.
The, the council, um, the council can make a motion to approve the mayor's nominations on those two points because under the ordinance, those are council votes. The, the council rep in the land use room?
Yeah.
Or us? Well, uh, open space, the wording of your ordinance is, um, the wording of your ordinance is that it's appointed by the mayor and the borough council. Oh, and the borough council. Yeah. I.
Does you want a different name as my brother? Oh, okay.
Move to approve.
So, motion.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, so then we have council committee appointments, so I literally have just finished these, so I don't even have a list to give to Valerie, I can, uh, I can read them off to you and then I, we can get you a list tomorrow first thing, if that's okay.
No, these are mayor appointments.
You.
Mayor appointment, no, no, they're not.
No, they're not.
They're council committee appointments.
Yeah, they're approved, but we're, we're, I mean, she can, she can nominate, but what I would suggest in that you just wrote down, uh, this too, I'm like, we'll table this, send this out to everybody and we'll, we'll, you know, at the next meeting and, and work, go from there.
Right, really.
Yeah, rather than.
Well, then we should, we should probably look into seeing what, um, uh, committees that are on here that actually have those appointments, cause there are things on here that aren't in, there are things on here that are not in our ordinance for committees, boards and commissions, and an example is the market, senior citizens, um, the, uh, community center, uh, real estate, celebration of events. There were a few of them that, that's not in our ordinance altogether. For committees. So, if we're going to do that, can we do all of the research to make sure that we have all of the committees that, um, belong, where they're supposed to belong and appointed by the people that are supposed to be appointed by?
Change the ordinance, you wanna change the ordinance?
Oh, no, no, I don't wanna change the ordinance, there are things in here that are not mentioned in the ordinance.
But should everything be mentioned, is that what you're asking to have them all included in it?
I'm looking to see if we can have the research done to see what belongs in there and what does not.
Yeah, and, Mayor, I, I can tell you that Valerie, obviously this came up at the last meeting, so Valerie and I took a look at this. Um, so, um, this has not been a subject that's sort of been well-developed here, um, in the past, um, I don't, I don't wanna step in anything, but in the past, there hasn't been a lot of disagreement about the committees, so this hasn't, uh, come to the forefront. Under the statute, the council has the right to organize, organize itself into committees. So, from the statute, there's a good argument that things that are what I would call standing committees, structural committees that participate in the, the, the operations of the government and give advisory council back to the council, um, I would say that those, uh, under the statute are council votes unless you adopt an administrative code that says otherwise. Because the statute specifically says that it's, the, the council can organize itself into committees unless they've adopted an administrative code that provides for some other procedure. So, I'm trying to draw a distinction that might be helpful to you. Committees that are structural, that, that are on a regular basis, that we've had for years or decades, and I think of, I'm only trying to give examples, not telling you what committees you should have. But finance committee, DPW, deep water and sewer, these types of things. Um, if you have those types of committees, I would suggest that those are, uh, at least council votes. Um, certainly, the tradition has been that the mayor, uh, makes nominations or appointments and the council votes to accept them, but I think they're council votes. I would say differently about what I would call ad hoc committees and, and some of the ones that the mayor just mentioned now, things like the marketplace, um, things like, um, um, wildlife committee, things like emergency management council, things like fire wise. We do not have a record of those committees showing up in an ordinance, we don't have a record of those committees being created by a resolution that define how they be filled in the future. I, I would think that categories like that would be what I would call ad hoc committees, committees that you might have for one year, committees that you might not populate the. Committees that you might have for one year, committees that you might not populate the next year, um committees that might be for a limited purpose, like a celebration, like a parade, like anything like that. And I would think that those would be mayor appointments, um because again, it has to do with something that is 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 more um temporary in the government, and temporary could be three months, six months or two years, I don't know. But it would be something that the mayor might be working on and wants a committee, and I would think that ad hoc committees that are not gonna be permanent committees, I would think that those are mayor appointments, and I would think that committees of the council um would require a council vote unless you change the administrative.
I have a question. This is the mayor's agenda, so historically, every other reorg, the committees have already been assigned, no discussion, voted and passed on, what's changed this year? The fact that we have a new mayor, so I'm just confused as to why the council would have to have such a say in it this year when historically, they've always just voted on it.
I.
As as I'm just for for the more, yeah, yeah.
No, no, I know, no, of course, I agree with you, I I agree with you in the past, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, no, no, that's.
So.
But I understand that, that there's never been any discussion.
Yeah, we were.
Whatever was laid out, we just laid out and voted on and passed, so if that was done by prior mayors, is it an issue if it's laid out in front of us or not?
That's up to you.
Right, well, that's my, that's my question, just me not knowing.
Because because the there's, you know, there's certainly in in municipal government, a lot of times traditions or procedures develop and they're followed year after year. And the answer to your question is someone asked the question.
Right.
I mean, at the last meeting, there was a number of questions about whether that committee was a mayor appointment or a council appointment.
Mm-hmm.
So the next day after the meeting, um I spoke to the clerk just to see which ones, there was there was a uh, you know, a a source document, a resolution or something. And so if when there's nothing, when the town hasn't passed anything, you trace back to the statute, the statute divides the powers between the council and the mayor. And so that's, the only difference is someone's asked a question, it's the only difference.
I think I think that it's just odd that all of a sudden this year, there's a question being asked, when year after year after year, there's never been a question asked, why ask it now? And I can tell you from the last time I was on council, the committees that I were, I was put on, that was it. The mayor told me that was it, and that's where I was going, so I don't understand how it, you understand how it's it's murky for us, because.
Well, I think I think the ma- right, so if if the mayor lists, if the mayor passes out her list of the committees and at the next meeting, the council votes, yes, we agree with all that, then there's there's no issue. Right, and that's what's happened in the past. At the reorg meeting, the mayor went down the list of the uh committees, I think sometimes not even read them, just said they're listed on the agenda, and the council said, I vote to approve that. So no one asked a question. It's all you can tell you.
Shannon, you and I were on council together.
Mm-hmm.
And yes, I recall, when the list comes out, I know when that list comes out, I know I've had a conversation with Mike Michael Ashford, he said, did you wanna be on this committee, you wanna be on that committee?
Well, that's nice for you, but no, I was never.
When he talked to you, did he, did he say you're gonna be on these committees?
No, I got a copy of the agenda with the committees I was on, that was the discussion.
The first two years that I did this, I had the same thing. I saw the list, I called Mike up and I said, what is this? And I said, Mike, I don't wanna be on this committee, I wanna be on that committee, and he either changed it or he didn't, that's the mayor's prerogative to appoint someone.
Mm-hmm.
So when I saw that list the first two years, now obviously Mike took that into account, because on the third year, he actually called me and said, Ryan, I just sent the list out, are you okay with this list, cause I would argue with him about it. That's what we do, I mean, I would suspect that the rest of us did that too, that when the list came out, first thing I did when I saw the list is call Mike on the phone and said, what, I don't like this list.
I did that for three years, right?
And he didn't listen to you?
And I sold, that was what it was, and that's where it was, it's my appointment and that's it. So it wasn't like I didn't ask the question, maybe I didn't call the attorney and ask the attorney the question, but I trusted that it was, and you just said it's the mayor's prerogative, it's it's their committee.
So Marie should send us a list of what she thinks the committees are, because we should have an opportunity to say, yeah, I don't wanna be on that one, can I be on that one?
Just read them.
And then we'll all discuss it, you know, like we should.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, are you asking me?
I meant, I meant John.
I didn't need to cut you off, that's all.
Mine's like, absolutely.
I meant John. Um in the past, uh council committees were always liaisons to these different groups, is that just phraseology? Or is that something that was um these ad hoc committees, uh I'm just trying to.
Is that what you're appointing, you're appointing liaisons?
Well, no, that that these these committees that were here were always uh liaisons to these different groups, because they would go to the groups and then they would come back and they would report to this group. Because the groups themselves, uh whoever the group is, whether um it's um some of the uh some of the other ones, like the market or seniors or municipal alliance and things, um those are committees where they had liaisons on them, cause those groups don't have members. Like senior, seniors, citizens is usually the representative that goes to seniors' aid. That's not a council person that's assigned to that group, it was a liaison that that was picked from the mayor to go to those groups, so that's, I'm questioning the word liaison compared to.
The 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 ones uh that are liaison type roles, I think are your appointments. I'd like to put the 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 wording in the statute is if the council organizes itself into standing committees, council members, and then it goes on to say it should be, their roles should be defined, and then it says who should be voted. Um and then it goes, the statute in another place says, the council may, the council may create such advisory councils to the municipality as it may choose, and then it goes on. But again, I'm trying to make a distinction that the statute is a little bit helpful with, but not super helpful with, which is things, as it's the examples I gave, I think would fall under this statute, I think things that are um not permanent committees or liaison type committees, I think are your appointment.
Okay, so let me just ask a question, so a committee like uh Finance, uh the budget is the mayor's budget. So the Finance Committee was the mayor and two other council person, people, but if the Finance Committee um is not one of those uh is not one of those committees, because it's, again, it's the mayor's whole budget, so how how does that fall into place?
Um well, look, I I would encourage, sort of strongly encourage, that if you're gonna have a Finance Committee, the mayor has to be on it, because you'd be working at cross purposes, if the council had a Finance Committee and you make the the budget and you weren't on the Finance Committee.
Well, of course, of course, but again, the mayor presents the budget to the council, so I'm I'm just saying, so having uh having to pick someone that that's on that, if if the Fin- again, Finance is is finance, uh but my question is just uh having people that are on those on those committees like Finance, how how does that fall into that statute that you're talking about?
I think it does, because it's a it's a couns- it's a it's a committee created, it's an advisory council to the municipality created by the council under the statute. But and again, now we're like, we're.
Well, we're splitting, we're splitting, we're splitting hairs, yeah.
We we are, because because and I I I sort of even hate to say this out loud, but um if you weren't happy with the committee, then you could work on the budget as mayor yourself and propose it to the borough. There's actually nothing that says you.
You have to have committees.
Correct.
Okay. That I I guess that's, I guess that's my question, cause maybe we can just avoid some of it by just not having the committees, if that's the, if that's the direction we go.
Mayor, if I could throw one thing in. It's I it appears here that I believe you had told me you would like to be on most of the committees.
Yes, I said I would like to be on most of the committees, cause I would like to acclimate myself to all of these different things, so I was not going to put three members on a committee. Some of the committees were only gonna have two members, um and some of them, like Doc Committee, has just one member, like myself, so, yes.
Right. And I I I would just say that there is support for that, for you to do that.
Okay.
You show you. So I would just go back to put your list together and submit it then, if you already got it, had it printed up and set it out, do this and that.
Okay. No, I don't.
But. Yeah, I mean, normally.
I just finished it like twenty minutes ago.
To answer some of the other things, normally we have it before, but all things considered, we're not saying anything other than, we'd just like to look at it.
Yes. No, and and again, that's not a problem.
I'm sorry, I'm confused, what is there support for?
Her being on any committee she wants are all committees, she can be on all the committees, we would support that.
Oh.
That's what I'm saying.
There's usually.
Who was that, who was that discussed with?
Who, I I actually, when I had a conversation with Bradley, I had said to him that for the uh committees that existed for liaison committees, I was going to put myself on all of those, so that I could go there and acclimate myself to whatever the groups were, so I could get as much information as possible, at least for the first year. So that, I didn't want three members and myself, because that's a quorum and we can't go.
Yeah.
So it was, I was gonna put myself on all of them and then have just another council person or two other council people that would be part of the group, cause there's no sense in all of us having to go to all of the same things, all the time.
I I agree with that completely, I think that's a great idea.
So do we, so then for clarification, do we know right now what's the standing committee and what's an ad hoc committee?
We don't. If I was asked, I'd be happy to come in and have a meeting and talk about.
Oh, I thought you said you and Valerie, the clerk, had already gone through it, that's why.
Well, we, well, we went through on the 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 reorg agenda, when we had gotten to a certain point on the reorg agenda, there was four or five committees that, you know, are not referenced in your ordinance, those are the ones specifically.
Oh, okay, okay.
There's, there's some more on this list in addition to those.
Got it.
In addition to the ones we looked for.
So we're making a motion to table this, is that accurate?
Yes.
I don't have the motion yet, but that's what I wrote down yet.
So I'll make the motion to table it till uh February seventh.
Second, Christine, second.
You're tabling just F?
Yeah.
F.
Just F.
F.
E.
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 E?
No.
There's two Fs, there's two Fs.
Right, there's many appointments.
Two Fs.
Oh, right.
Same way, F, council, committee, appointments.
Many appointments, yeah. And but this one on this side is just.
Yeah, the other F is appointments to wildlife.
Right, but on the old one, it was F.
It's just um.
Oh, that's.
Yeah. Yeah, I had the whole one in.
Yeah, that should be, that should have been.
Yeah, there's there's two different.
No, it's it's the one that I just got.
Mayor, if I could, if I could implore the council to, and yourself to use consideration, if we could have a functioning Finance Committee, um it must, it's three weeks until the next council meeting and the clock is sort of running on, the budget and introduction of the budget and so forth.
Has has the mayor received the budget yet?
She received the documents from the CFO.
Yes, I I have, I have pieces, I have pieces of the budget, um uh can we just at this point, where I'll just deal with it till we actually do, that's fine, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
I I do have one question, I'm sorry, John, um the Muskanekon Sewage Authority is on here, and I know that um Mr. Schindler was appointed to that, and I think the resolution is till twenty-five or twenty.
It's supposed to be for five years.
Yeah, but I think it goes to twenty-five or twenty-seven, so.
No, you're good, sorry.
So I'm sorry, so um I, that one really probably shouldn't be on here, cause we can't put a council person on that, correct?
I don't know, um I have to look at the, that comes from the Muskanekon Sewage Authority rules, which I could look at, which is.
Five, it's a five-year term, but they discuss the legislation.
Right, but the the question is whether or not it could be a council person.
Right, that's my question, does it have to be an elected official or can it still just say, stay, uh Mr. Schindler?
Uh if you come back to that question in a minute, I'll tell you.
Okay.
I know that the gentleman before me was not a council person.
Oh, okay, so it's possible that it could be anybody, which which is fine, but then we should just remove it off the year, is what we should do.
Well, should we add it somewhere on here so we can get updates as to what's going on for an open line of communication, if nobody can hear us on there?
Sure.
We can do that like we're doing the updates from um Dan McCarthy for the um like Pacan Commission, who's gonna come quarterly to give updates, we can always get updates quarterly too. Okay. So the appointment of the Wildlife Committee, I do not have a, I do not have the information back yet from um Fish and Wildlife, so that really is hindering uh what we can do and what we can't do uh with that committee, so uh that committee, I don't know if you wanna just table it till it's available or table it till the seventh, I'm not really sure how that's actually going to work, because I'm at the mercy of getting the information from that before we can even start it.
And if we get it by then, we'll let you know that we'll.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
So we find that G, what should be G?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um the appointment of the council representative of the Emergency Management, I'm sorry, votes table.
We voted on tabling committees either.
No, we didn't.
Or you had a motion in the second.
Right.
All in favor.
Aye. That was for which one?
That was for the committees, now we're gonna do Wildlife.
A pleasure.
So a motion to table the Wildlife Committee.
Ryan hated, I made, I seconded, I seconded it.
All in favor.
Aye.
Uh the appointment of the council representative to the Emergency Management Council, uh I have Brian Smith. Appointment of the council liaison to the Senior Assistant Advisory Committee, I have Bradley Hofercam. The appointment to the Firewise Committee, the appointment of the chairman, Bernie Kachkowski. And I believe uh you were looking to add Scott Wallace to that, is that the, is that the committee? You were looking to add Scott Wallace to that.
Scott came to me years ago and asked if he could be on that committee, I had mentioned it to Mike and Mike said yes, but then never did.
Okay, but that's the one you were.
Yes.
Okay, so if we can, if we can add uh Scott Wallace to that, and then the appointment of the council representative um was Jennifer Johnson.
Okay, so Bernie was already on as far.
But we have to pick a chairman, yeah.
Okay, so who's the chairman?
So out of that group, I picked um, he's the fire marshal, so I picked him as the chairman.
He's the chairman, okay. Scott Wallace and Jennifer, and I think Scott Wallace.
Yes. And can I have a motion in second?
Oh, I'll do it. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Uh New Business, we have our reports, we have the tax collectors' report for November twenty twenty-three, would anybody like to discuss that? No discussion? Okay. Can I have a motion in second to the seventh?
Move to the seventh.
Second.
And the roll?
Mr. Harper Camp.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Epstein.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez, yes.
Epstein.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Our second uh New Business is zoning office reports for October through December twenty twenty-three and the twenty twenty-three annual report. Is there any discuss, well, I need a motion report in this second.
Motion made.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Uh so on the annual report, so I'm just picking one category, litter complaints, twenty-four, warnings sent, one oh five, second warnings, none, summons eighteen, so second warnings are given on the just at the discretion of our zoning officer? Like, is there a formal process in place for how that works?
Correct.
So litter complaints are twenty-four, is that only twenty-four sites that he went to based on complaints, or is it twenty-four total complaints mid-year?
It's twenty-four, it's twenty-four total complaints, if you uh remember earlier um uh when um the administrator had talked about his final report, he talks about calls that he received, thousands of calls that he receives. This is just actual summonses that he wrote for second summonses, first summonses, the annual report is what actually went out and physically got done.
Mr. Donegan usually uh works with the property owner and gives them a warning and a second warning, usually uh issuing a summons as a, a means of ass resort if they simply don't comply.
Okay, all right, I was just, I was just wasn't sure, because there's no second warnings here listed, so I wasn't sure if it was at his discretion after an initial warning sent, there's zero warning.
Yeah, it is, would be at his discretion, it depends on, we could look at the eighteen summonses, there may be, it may have been something that was egregious that he felt the summons was in order to do, and and he's empowered to make those charges as the zoning code enforcement.
I just wasn't sure if there's a formal process.
Um just, just for education, Rachel, if you look, it shows the zoning report for October first, twenty twenty-three, and then there's a summons log for October twenty twenty-three. The annual report is all of the months altogether with totals, so these are just for these two months, so it will tell you issued, issued, um and then how many uh actually went out with all of the different uh categories for, like uh the administrative expenses and things like that.
Right, right.
Okay, so that brings us to um, yes, yes, uh so we have a motion in a second, a roll call.
Mr. Harper Camp.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Epstein.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Epstein.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
We are at number fifteen, public.
Can I, can I bring up two more, just two?
Sure.
In new business?
In new business, sure.
Um, so we had a board of health, is, would this be the place for me to bring up the chickens, Brad?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um.
Perfect.
Is, um, presenting a, an ordinance, or an ordinance? To change chickens from the R three to include R two and R three. People had, we would change the ordinance.
We could ask the attorney and the business administrator to come up with a modification to the ordinance.
Modification to the ordinance to include R two into the current ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
We could do that. We would discuss that as a group. Uh, that was the recommendation made at the board of health meeting before this. Uh, we would have discussed those as a group.
Well, did, did we establish what R two was? We know it's square feet, but how many?
We didn't look at that yet.
So.
But again, we could ask for them to draft the ordinance. And then when the ordinance gets introduced, we could, for the discussion.
Change discussion.
And identify.
And that way the, the public will have a chance to look at an introduction of an ordinance and discuss it with us.
Sounds good. So now you'd like, make a motion to.
Please.
All right, so I'll make the motion for the administrator and the attorney to draft an ordinance including R two for chickens.
Second.
And three.
Well, R three is already in there.
Okay.
It would be just adding R two.
Adding R two, okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the second thing?
Oh, the second thing was, I, I thought, I was, I just wanted to mention street hockey. That's right. Uh, street hockey signups are in-person registration upper level of the senior center Monday through Friday from nine to four. The last day for registration is Friday, March twenty-second. You must be registered before the first practice starts. Registrations will not be accepted at the practices or games. The online registration is going to be available soon. Practice starts Saturday, March twenty-third. Games start Saturday, April sixth. The season ends Sunday, June sixteenth. If you have any questions, please reach, reach out to Roseanne Schultz at eight six two two one seven six nine three eight. And there are two divisions. B division is grades two through five and A division is grades six through twelve. Fifty dollars a player. It's a great, great program.
That's it. Thanks.
Since we're taking the opportunity, can I make a couple of announcements?
Sure.
Chamber of Commerce events that are coming up. Uh, the Young Professional Social is, uh, January twenty-fourth. The, uh, next meeting of Chamber of Commerce is February ninth. The next P two P breakfast is February thirteenth. The annual dinner will be hosted on February twenty-first. There's a tourism summit that's being worked on right now, Tourism in Sussex County. And that's gonna be March fourteenth. More details on the website, SussexCountyChamber.org. Uh, there's, the awards luncheon has been scheduled for April twenty-fifth. And, uh, Sussex County Day on the books, just go ahead and mark it on your calendars, is September fifteenth. Um, and, uh, I do have something from over at the Sussex County Municipal Utilities Authority. The next paper shredding event is January nineteenth. That's all I have left. Thank you.
Sussex County Day again?
September fifteenth.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments? Okay, thank you.
Yes. Um, I want to welcome Byron Bay Bistro to the town. Uh, they had their grand opening this past Saturday. It's where Ronnie's Dance Studio was. Um, I want to thank Jack DeGru, our Sussex, our newest Sussex County Commissioner, um, for coming down and attending the ribbon cutting. If you haven't been there, I highly recommend it. It's, um, a little restaurant, but a big punch of flavor in all their food. Um, it's Polish and Caribbean.
Caribbean.
So it's delicious. I highly recommend it. Um, and then also the Northwood Community Association. We typically meet on the third Saturday of every month. Uh, but for January, our next meeting is gonna be Saturday, January twenty-seventh at ten AM at the Northwood Fire Company Number Two. That was it.
Thank you. Uh, motion for, open for public comment?
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is open to the public for anything and everything? Heather?
Actually, I have a quick question. The zoning report that you provided, how is that tracked and monitored? Is it tracked and monitored? Because just in looking there, and I'm gonna provide one example, because I know all too much about it. Three twenty-six Windsor Avenue, there was a complaint issued in February of twenty-twenty-three. Nothing further regarding the garbage and everything else that is at this house. Nothing was ever issued beyond a complaint for that. And then they were issued a summons for advertising a short-term rental. Same people have been in there forever. The house is falling apart. It's still allocated its rental currently and it, the window's not going anywhere. Um, but there was nothing followed up on the condition of the property. So it kind of left off and then in September of twenty-twenty-three, they were issued a complaint, or issued a violation for something completely different that doesn't appear previously. So what is the tracking mechanism for that?
I believe most of these things are up to the discretion of the zoning officer. I mean, I can definitely look into the, um, the property that you mentioned and see, uh.
Well, just using that as an example, but in general, what's the follow-up measure for that? Because the property has not changed condition at all. It's gotten worse. The police have been there for, she's got cat issues and turkey vultures and everything else. But the condition hasn't changed and it, nothing was ever done. It just, the complaint was sent, nothing was done beyond that. And then a new actual violation for something completely different that doesn't even make sense, because the house is not being advertised nor is it in a condition to be advertised for short-term rental. So it's just a matter of what's the, what type, type of tracking is done to actually follow through with any of this? Regardless of who's responsible for it.
And I'm sorry, Heather, what was the number again?
Three twenty-six. But in general, it's just a generalized question that somebody should be looking at.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else?
Lynn Ritchie. Your chicken ordinance. Come on now. Everybody knows there's chickens in the town, so how many ye- years are we gonna go between R three, R two, board of health? Let's vote it in. My question is, for all the chickens in the town, are we writing them up for violations? Are we just, shh, there's chickens in the town. And when we pass the ordinance, we're gonna go back and grant you the authority to own chickens. So settle the chicken ordinance already. How many, I mean, come on. It's, it's almost comical, to the point where it's ten of nine and you're talking about a chicken ordinance where there's chickens in the town. Settle it. Enough already.
Thank you.
Just to point a clarification, I think John Taylor is already on the land use board.
Yeah.
And so is Judy Croft. So they're both gonna be on the land use board and on open space?
Uh, we haven't filled the open space yet, but, uh, that, uh, I'm sorry, the open space has to have two representatives from, uh, land use.
Okay. And the second one is that isn't the mayor ex officio on all committees? Ms. Harrison?
Um, no, not necessarily.
Oh, I thought I read that in the statute. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to bring it back?
So made.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, so I just have a few, uh, comments for everyone. Uh, as the administrator mentioned, we had our, uh, first snow, uh, for January sixth. Um, we've had the rainstorm, we've had snow for the fifteenth into the sixteenth. And I, what I understand, there's more snow coming. Uh, so I guess we're paying for last year's easy street. One of the interesting things that I learned through this snowstorm is that there's actually seventy-one miles of road to plow in Hopeakon. That's a lot of miles. So I know a lot of the people, uh, residents who, uh, call and say, oh, you know, they're not on my street. Well, it's not really possible for them to be in front of your house at the same time, especially when there's seventy-one miles of road for them to go through. And each person who is plowing has an area of between seven and eight miles that they're actually plowing. So they are in the area, they are around, and, um, I think that, again, the roads were fabulous, uh, which they usually are. And as the administrator mentioned, uh, there were episodes where we were not able to get great, uh, snow removal on county roads, which was very unusual this year. And, uh, we had to, uh, take care of some of that too. I do want to clarify that Dan McCarthy from the Lake of Packon Commission is coming quarterly. He's coming March twentieth, uh, June nineteenth, October second, and December fourth. So that we can get the Lake of Packon Commission updates quarterly throughout the year as things are changing with the lake. I also want to mention that Troop Eighty-eight is hosting a Stuff the Trailer. That's on weekends at the Byram Shoprite, and they're collecting non-perishable goods for the local school weekend bags. Um, and I just want to remind everyone that it is pet licensing month. And with it being winter, uh, helpful, um, hints that you can have is to remember to keep your sidewalks and walkways cleared for emergency responders in case there is something that happens. That doesn't always happen all the time. And the fire department does go out and dig out the fire hydrants. But if you do have one outside your house and you can do it yourself, if you could do that, because they can't get to all of them as fast as, as fast as we'd like them to. And the other thing is the posting of house numbers. I had a conversation with the, um, chief of police and we do have an ordinance that says that you're supposed to have your house number, you know, prominently displayed on your house. Um, I can, I can say from going door to door, there were a lot of houses that did not have really visible house numbers. And it's actually very dangerous, you know, for the residents because of emergency services, because they, they will not necessarily know where you are. So if, um, we can just remind everybody to put the house numbers, have them be right out in front for everybody to see and remind everybody of that, please, because it will save lives.
Will it count on the mailbox?
No.
No, it has to be on the dwelling.
Um, I have to do further research or we can discuss it offline, but I believe there's a grant where we could possibly have those provided for residents if, if, um, if granted to us.
Okay, that sounds great.
Further into it, but that way it would save the taxpayers something.
That, that sounds great. Um, that was all that I have for announcements. Motion to adjourn?
So made.
Second.
Motion, meeting adjourned.